Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Cavill.
I would like to call to order the public hearing on, as required, for our school committee budget for FY seventeen on Tuesday, April 26, 2016. Mrs. Kennedy, would you kindly call the roll?
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Ms. Sweeney.
Present.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Hawkeizer.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Minn.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. Before we start, we had a very unfortunate situation occur in our city last night where we lost one of our firefighters, Tony Raven, who had been with our department for many years. I understand he has a son in the high school, and he died of a very unexpected heart attack. And it's been a very, very difficult day for our fire department. So I would ask that everyone please, if we could just have a moment of silence to remember Thank you. Could we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I will turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Susan Baccaro, who will do a budget presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to start off by doing a five-year, just to give you a brief overview of a five-year history. And there's a couple of things that I'd like to point out. You will notice that since fiscal year 2012, our choice tuition has certainly decreased over time, and our circuit breaker has increased over time. It's been variable, but that is due to the fact that we've had increased special education costs. A couple of other things that I'll point out. We have listed, again, our grants, and we are doing much more of a real tight look at all of our grants, in particular kindergarten, our preschool, as well as our athletic, and really looking at the revenue that we are bringing in. We've made an extra effort to bring in as much revenue as possible. I also want to point out that the city is also responsible for the costs of school district employees' insurance. Can everybody hear me in the back? And also, we've identified the pensions that are funded by the city, as well as the city also funds our capital expenses. We are, the school department, is one more department in the city. So the city funds all of those things. One of the things that I was first asked to do when I came to do report was to really identify what were some staffing needs that we had. As many, probably most of you know, we had had a series of significant cuts to staffing due to budget over the last 10, 12 years. And one of the things that we did was we began, in working close with my leadership team, which is all of the administrators in the district, and they work in turn as close with their staffs, identifying what were the needs our students had that were remaining unfulfilled. So we began a sort of a three-year process of saying, what are the things that we can fill? So if you take a look at the '15, '16, you'll see that the majority of things have been filled for there. We've moved some things as we have needed to do that, and we've identified needs for the next couple of years. They are going unfunded at this point, but they are still on our radar screen. We update it on a regular basis. In terms of salaries and both expenses, you can see the majority of the budget is due to salaries. We are obviously a very heavily people, person occupation. That's what, that's what schools are. I mean, our investment is in our teachers, our staff, our administrators. That's where the majority of the money goes. The rest is in expenses. In any given year, we increase the budget, I mean, we increase the staff, we decrease the staff based on student needs. And projecting for the '17 school year, we have staff reductions on the left-hand side. So the total reductions there are 2.2 full-time equivalents. On the right-hand side, you can see the increases. We've projected five overall, so there's a 2.8 full-time equivalent increase in staffing for the projected '17 budget. We take a look at each of our schools, and we break it down: salaries, supplies and materials, the equipment, our athletic costs, obviously that's at the high school and the middle school, our textbooks, software, other administrative costs. And in that category, we cover things like, at the high school, graduation, awards, the NIASC accreditation. Nancy, I'm going to ask you to flip back to the, I want to talk a little bit more. I want to go back to the increases. Something that I left out that I wanted to mention here. On the right-hand side, in terms of the staff increases at Breznerhan, this was based, when you see the preschool teacher, the special education teacher, the IA, those were really based on the ratio of students with disabilities to those students who don't have disabilities. We have to maintain a state, the state gives us a guideline in terms of the ratio that we have to have. So that's one of the reasons that we have those increases at Breznerhan. And I failed to mention that earlier. The middle school, again, same categories that you're seeing for the high school: up slightly in salaries, down in supplies and materials, equipment a little bit up, textbooks up just a little bit as well, software is down, our other administrative costs are down as well, as our plant operations are up by $3,000. At Molen, Molen has, if you take a look at the salaries there, they're pretty even. Supplies and materials are again down. Our equipment has stayed the same, and Nancy, correct me, let me introduce Nancy Lysick, who is the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent for Business and Human Resources. And Nancy, the equipment there, is that the copier?
In most categories, in most schools, it's the copier lease.
The copier lease is what you see under equipment in most of the schools. Again, the equipment that you see there is the copier lease. You'll see that our salaries are up in that case. Again, that's some of the new positions that I was talking about in special education. Our supplies and materials are pretty much equal. Other administrative costs, at Breznerhan, this encompasses things like field trips, memberships, printing, and postage. Again, the operation of the plant there is pretty steady, and up by about a half million dollars, which most of that is attributable to salary. System-wide, salaries are up slightly here, supplies and materials are down, equipment has stayed relatively equal, and other costs, which include our operations cost, special education, transportation, insurance, things like that, which all fall onto central office, that's up significantly. Because special education in particular, our increase there has been significant across the entire district. In terms of summary, I'm going to let you just take a look at that for a minute. You can compare fiscal year '16 to '17 and see the difference at each, in each building, as well as in system-wide. And Nancy, would you just talk a minute about why system-wide is up as much as it is?
System-wide is up due to $160,000 in sick leave buyback, special education increased, insurance costs have increased. A lot of our costs that you would consider fixed costs, they do increase year to year. But those are the biggest increases.
And the fiscal year '16 versus '17 budget, we've given you the both the salaries and the expenses. So the increase is $1,003,000. The percentage of the increase is 4.49%. And there's a few things I want to talk about here. We looked for additional revenue when we were looking at this budget. And as I stated earlier, we found some in the preschool, in the funding for that, in our kindergarten, and also in athletics. We recently have received a Safe and Supportive Schools grant, which everyone across the district is, all schools are involved in that, for $20,000. And we ended up with a shortfall of about $99,000, and I have to thank the city for coming up with that so that we could find about, we could actually create a balanced That's a very brief overview of the budget. At the later, at the second part of this meeting, we'll be giving more detailed information out that actually has all the line item information in it. This really, the public hearing, is about hearing from the public, so that's an overview. And I will sit down until we have any questions.
So now what we would like to do is invite members of the public to come up, and you could take the seat either next to Nick Decanter or Bruce Menon, and offer your comments, state your name, your address, and please try to keep your comments to a few minutes, please.
I live at 9 Markone Lane in Newburyport. I'm here tonight as a parent, as a resident of Newburyport, and as voter. And I apologize if I sound a little angry, because I am. I'm angry that I have to be here yet again, speaking at a meeting. And a lot of times, we hear a little pushback on that, that, you know, you guys have to be here, we should be here if we, you know, find it important. But that's what I elect my representatives to do. I work, I have a family, and I have my things that I do, which is not school committee, and it is not school council. I do volunteer work, I was on the strategic planning committee, I'm a co-chair of the kitchen tour committee, I go to PTO meetings, I am on other committees, I do activism, I have other things that I do as well. And I'm missing my family time to come here and speak yet again on the budget that is not okay with me. Education to me is my number-one priority, and I understand that that's a subjective thing. It is not everybody's number-one priority. I do think if you're on the school committee, it should be probably your number-one priority. And if you are part of our city, to me, it should be a top priority. I personally, I'll admit, I'm not easily pleased. I don't want a budget that gradually puts back things that should be in schools. There are a lot of things that are not in the Newbury Public School, Newburyport Public Schools that I think should be in there, that were taken out a long time ago and are still not back. I want to be moving forward from where we were, not desperately trying to get back to 1985, or '95, or whenever. So I just, I think that what I really want to say, when I first started going to the strategic planning meetings, I was, I'll admit, very cynical walking in the door. And after the first meeting, and after a few meetings, I felt really, really hopeful and excited. And at the end of it, with this budget coming out, I just don't feel that anymore. I feel, you know, a little foolish for feeling so excited. I don't feel like Newburyport is moving in the direction that I thought that maybe we would be moving. So, you know, I'm going to let others speak to the details, and what can be done, or what should be done, and where we can get the money. I'm not an expert in that. As far as I'm concerned, we need to get the money. And where you get it is not my job. It needs to be gotten. And I just want to be very clear that, you know, I know that for a lot of people, education is a top priority. I do my homework when I vote, and from here on, not only am I voting according to education being a top priority, but I will actively campaign against anybody in this city, and I will say this at City Council as well, where education is not their top priority. And that's it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Mashburn. M-A-S-H-B-U-R-N. And I'm on 25 Markone Lane. And I'm here as a parent and a taxpayer in the city of Newburyport. I want to first start with, there's an event going on at the Molen tonight that's covering fourth graders. So all parents with fourth-grade students are not going to be here tonight, because no one's going to choose a budget meeting over seeing their child at their school. So I think if nothing else, a secondary meeting needs to be scheduled in relatively short order to give those families an opportunity to speak their mind as well. Having said that, the superintendent spoke about the incredible increase in the special ed needs of our children, and we are now suggesting making larger classes. I don't think it takes a lot to figure out, we're going to increase the size of our classes. We're already spending an awful lot of money in special ed. That special ed budget's going to go up. Kids are going to get lost. The classes are big enough as they are. There's clearly a lot of special need, and I think we need to stop and take a look at, the size of the classes are going to hurt the kids, and the kids are what we're here for. That's what this meeting is about, the children, and they're going to get lost. Because the teachers, which are phenomenal, I have, we have some amazing teachers in the school district, but they are stretched so far, many of them digging into their own pockets to supply their classrooms with classroom supplies. And I know that that is a danger of being a teacher, because a teacher sees something at Lakeshore Learning and goes, ooh, I want that. So I understand the danger of that. But to have to go and buy dry erase markers, colored pencils, pencils, they shouldn't have to do that. I don't like that the teachers that are teaching my children, I have a sixth grader and a third grader, that they have to spend money out of their own pocket. I'm not, I'm not a taxpayer paying these teachers so that they can go and buy classroom supplies. That should be coming out of something else. So I think we really need to stop and take a very large look at the classroom size. We can't afford bigger classrooms. We need to maintain the teachers. The teachers need assistance in those classes. You're going to increase the classes to 23 kids in a class potentially without an assistant? Can you imagine yourself sitting in a classroom with 23 eight-year-olds and trying to maintain their attention, and teach them, and teach the special ed kids? And very often, we get kids in, coming into the district where English is not their primary language. Some don't even speak it when they get here. What's that teacher going to do? How is that teacher going to teach those kids like our kids need to be taught? And I'm just going to close with, I think, I don't know where the money comes from, I don't know how the budget works, I have zero accounting experience, but it breaks my heart to think that this community spends so much time and concern about what the waterfront looks like in a parking garage, and we're cutting teachers out of the school system. It baffles me, and it breaks my heart. Thank you for your time.
I'm Joan Sheehan. I'm a third-grade teacher at the Breznerhan School. I'm also the vice president of the Newburyport Teachers Association. I have a statement I'd like to read this evening, and dies passing when else, so that everyone can have one up front. The Newburyport Teachers Association wholeheartedly objects to the proposed budget before the school committee tonight. The 3.31% appropriation from the city does not nearly do justice to the needs of the school department. The fact is that the Newburyport School District has been chronically underfunded and understaffed for years, and the reason that worked so well for the city of Newburyport is because of the benevolence of wonderful donor organizations and the extraordinary generosity of the teaching and support staff who underwrite the district by spending thousands of hours per year working beyond the school day just to keep up. This goodwill creates the illusion of growth, but it's just an illusion. The staff is functioning under the burden of an ever-increasing number of initiatives, some mandated by the Commonwealth, and others coming from the school district itself. Many of our special educators and service providers are toiling under grossly inadequate schedules as they struggle to manage caseloads, provide services, test students, consult, attend 504 and IEP meetings, and deliver extensive data for legal cases. The lack of sufficient instructional aid support further exacerbates these problems and is not in the bestest interest of our students. There is no time to breathe, and more and more staff members are suffering from stress-related diagnoses. The lack of meaningful acknowledgement of swelling workload demands and the increasing stress under which the school department staff is working is disappointing at best. We do applaud the school committee and the administration for attempting to engage the community in the development of a strategic plan to guide the district into the future. However, strategic plans and three-year plans are great soundbites, but lack value and credibility without the funds to adequately support them. Freezing the budget at the beginning of the third triad of the school year sends the message to everyone that is listening that our budget can be shrunk at will. We don't need those funds this year. They can easily be pushed to the next year. And finally, while it is unquestionably important to thank many times over the numerous outside benefactors of the Newburyport school system for their incredible generosity in support of our city's children, it is equally important to acknowledge and care for your staff that are responsible for the incredible successes in the Newburyport schools. The new Breznerhan School, the recent renovations at the Knockin-Molen, and the beautiful athletic fields are surely something of which we're all very proud. However, they are the place we gather, not a replacement for the skill and caring provided by educators. We urge you to consider more proper staffing to meet the demands of the state and the significant needs of our student population. So the Newburyport Teachers Association respectfully requests that the school committee take up the fight, push back, and reject this proposed FY '17 budget. 3.31% is not nearly enough to keep our schools moving in the direction of growth. Thank you.
I'm Sean Flaherty, Three Summit Place, also have taught in Newburyport for about 20 years. I put two children through this fine school system. However, they're now in their middle twenties, and, you know, since the cuts, the huge cuts maybe 10 years ago, I've been waiting, as an educator, for programs to return. And I just think that, you know, things financially, fiscally aren't tremendous, but they're way better than they have been in the past. And I just urge the members of the school committee to vote no on the 3.3. Thank you.
I'm Renee Ames. I am, I live at 17 Forrester Street, and I'm here as a parent. I have two young children in second and kindergarten, and I'm also a longtime teacher in Newburyport. Been here for 22 years. And I've been to previous meetings where I've said, I'm going to say almost the same thing, which is that I am appreciative of the support that we have received from outside sources and also from the city in terms of our buildings and the different projects that have happened. I remain concerned, as a parent, about class size and a budget that has cuts to teaching staff. When you cut the teaching staff, you affect every child in the situation. In an elementary classroom, when you cut the teaching staff, the class numbers go up, and every kid is affected. I also want to share the increased demands on teachers, whether by the state or district initiatives, has been incredible, and the needs of kids that we have in our classrooms has grown tremendously, and teachers are scrambling to try to get it all done. And when you increase class size, you negatively impact every kid and every teacher's ability to meet those demands that come from, that come from the state or from the district. I've also taught here a long time, and I'm so saddened to continue to see the decrease in the quality of overall programming that we can offer our kids. While there are some additions, I feel that we aren't ready, we aren't heading towards where we should be for the sake of our kids.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Pam Armstrong. I live at Five Buck Street. I don't want to repeat a lot of the wonderful things that have been said, although I feel like I could repeat almost every single thing. It sounds like a lot of people here could, by the sounds of the applause. I don't know if my comment is going to get applause. I think probably a lot of people in this town would not applaud it, but I feel like I do know where the money comes from. And it's not your decision so much, but I do have a mayor here, and there's at least one city councillor, two city councillors, three, four, yay, more city councillors out there tax me. Go ahead and raise it up, too. You know, I know we don't even have to have an override to make it happen, but I know I've been in meetings before where we begin to touch on that idea, and it's not that there are a lot of voices, maybe there are, but there are some very loud and clear voices who say, no way. And I want to be a loud and clear voice that says, yes, this is worth it, I'll do it, I'm willing, I'm, you know, there you go. I'll pay my part to have the system that I know can be there. And having been, again, part of the strategic planning and seeing definitely the hope, the amazing possibility, and people who are putting effort into imagining an education that doesn't necessarily require tons of money. You know, the dreaming that's happening, the planning that's happening is not, is also, you know, it's not necessarily expensive, but we got to give a little bit to get there. So you got my vote if you want to raise taxes up to that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jay Ianini. I live at 26 Summit Place. First, I'd like to thank all of the educators, parents, and city council members who have come out. Give yourselves a round of applause, please. Good to see folks out. I'd like to thank the school committee for all of their support and the mayor for her support of a budget that is definitely challenging. The piece that I've handed out is about how important foreign language has become in educating our students. The state is considering a certification for bilingual proficiency for high school students. I've seen great things happen. I've been here for about 10 years. I have a daughter who's in ninth grade, I have a son who's in seventh grade. When this community rallies around a cause, amazing things happen. Mountains get moved. We built an elementary school, we renovated a middle school, we fixed a track, sorry, we're about to fix a track, hopefully. We have fixed a stadium, but I can't remember who made the point, but the physical plant is fantastic, but if you don't fund what goes on inside the physical plant adequately, it just doesn't work. My kids have had a great experience so far, but I fear for the kids who are coming in the future. And that's why I would love to see some steam behind putting foreign language back at the middle school. I know it's not a line item, budget item right now, but I've also, I've seen some very effective management of getting things passed. I think the mayor did a great job presenting to the city council about the needs around security at the high school. I thought it was clear, concise, and worked well. I think if we come up with a strategy around, and by the way, this is just my piece, really Susan is the one who dictates what we need in the schools, but this has just been a hot button issue since I've been here, so I thought that this would be a good thing to discuss. Decide what it is that you want to put back, figure out a plan, and execute appropriately. We have three city council members here, which I'm very happy to see. I think that with the right amount of effort, we can do great things. So let's get together and make things happen. In terms of what the budget looks like right now, I'm disappointed, frankly. I'd like to see more coming towards the schools. While my kids are excited every day when they go to school, when I go to the schools and I talk to the teachers and the guidance councillors and people who are there, they're also excited, but they're working really hard. And I feel like everyone there is, is just up to the edge in terms of what they can give. And that's just not a good way to act, to be forced to behave as a human being, so. To Pam's point, I'm certainly behind more funding for the schools, no matter what that takes, so I'm happy to support that. So if the school committee and the city council want to get behind an initiative, I'm happy to help. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Gasparrow. And I live at 30 Daniel Lucy Way. And I will echo some of the information that has been said, just because I do think it's important to hear that there's more support for that. This is, we are new to Newburyport. We moved last summer, and we did our homework, and we moved for a reason. We didn't move for a cheaper house, for sure. We moved into an area where we thought that the school district would provide what we wanted for our children. We have eight-year-old children. I'm very concerned about the increase in class size that would be put forth by this budget, and I would urge you to reject that budget. I am here representing, as a parent, I also am a substitute teacher primarily in the elementary school where my children are, though I have subbed in the upper elementary and the middle school. So I do see what, how the class sizes are now. One of my children is in a class with 23 students. 23 students is a lot right now. Cutting, I can only imagine, could go up to 25, 26 students. And I can't imagine how that could be handled in a classroom with special education needs, behavioral components that need to be addressed. When I substitute, I'm trying to get information that is dictated by the Commonwealth, dictated by the school department, across to these children. You know, in some, some days I'm there for a day and sometimes I'm there for a week at a time. When I'm there, there are times where I feel I just can't reach, I just can't reach these kids, because I can't separate myself in a way that provides what's needed for the behavioral components of students there, provides what's needed for the special education components, and, you know, provide what's needed to what would be considered the typical in the classroom. And I can leave in a day and think, wow, that was, that was a lot of work. You know, that was maybe disheartening when I can't, don't feel I can get to them. I can't imagine what 180 days of 26, 27 students in a classroom would do to me as a teacher who entered a profession not because I wanted, you know, a three-digit salary, but entered a profession because I wanted to see these kids through, I wanted to see their growth, I wanted to see their potential, and I wanted each child to reach their potential, whether it's on the typical level or a child who may be receiving special education or a child who's receiving behavioral intervention. I want to echo what one of the parents said about the molen event tonight, just because I think it's important for you to know that I reached out to many parents via text and email, and I got many responses that they had fourth graders and they could not make it. So I believe there, in my neighborhood, would have been at least five to 10 more parents that would have been here when I reached out. I also want to say that I appreciate some of the project-based learning that happens in the schools. Not every child is a sit-down-and-look-at-the-board. You know, we have visual, verbal, but we have many kinesthetic learners as well. Many of the things that have been most impressive to me this year and things that have most ignited my children as they've come home have been project-based learning that has come from grants. Drums Alive, for example, ignited the school. STEM coming to the school ignited the school. Project-based learning is very important for children because we are not all children who can sit and look at a board, especially in my mind, when I'm speaking as a parent of boys. Many of us know, you know, educators will tell you that boys learn differently, and there's, you know, a lot of movement that needs to happen. So especially as a parent of boys, I'm really a fan of project-based learning, and that's what ignites their interest. With 23, 22 children that my boys have had in class, there is some project-based learning, and I am very impressed with the teachers when they can incorporate that. You know, they made sleds with cardboard, you know, when they can incorporate that, I'm very impressed. With 26, 25 students in a classroom, I mean, I could not imagine how that they could incorporate some of the things that are important for these kinesthetic learners and this project-based, and the things that really ignite. You know, Galileo didn't sit in a classroom. He took them outside and he had them look at the world. Socrates didn't sit in a classroom. Project-based learning is very important, and I urge you to reject the budget because I know that increase in class size is going to absolutely take that away, and as it is now, a lot of that is through grant funding. Thank you.
I'm Pam Jamison, and I work at the Newburyport Public Schools, the Brezner Hand School. And I'd like to just speak with the school committee and everyone that's here just regarding the special subjects that are a big key part to the child's whole education. And I just want to read a short email that I shared with Christina Davis, who, you know, she tried everything she could and really did her best with this, but I just want to give you some perspective on what it means to even provide just the art program at the Brezner Hand School. So I'm going to read you this email. "I thought this information will be helpful for you in the future when you work on numbers in the art supply budget. Budget of $3,800 divided by 180 days in the school year means the art budget is $21.11 per day for art supplies for students. Divide 2111 by 600-plus students means that the art budget is 3.5 cents per day per child. If the budget were 5 cents per day per student, the art budget would be $5,400, which approximately was where it was at for a while, which seemed to be reasonable. That approximate, that's what approximately combined budget was for K plus 1 through 3, which I don't think is unreasonable. And I told her, I hope this highlights my concerns regarding continued art supply cuts and budgets, which help, which would help obtain budget increases that we need." So even these little perspectives that go, not little, but perspectives that go on when I see the entire school population of students and try to provide what's needed, other people spoke to getting supplies out of your pocket. It's been done a lot. Supplies in the arts are consumable all the time. Vendors are coming in with less in a package. It used to be 100, now it's down to 25 sheets in a package and those kind of things. So those kind of things have to be understood, that the, when you're, when you're working with vendors, you're not getting the volume that you used to get for the money, and all that kind of thing goes up. So I just want to say thank you to Christina for helping out with a little bit more in that budget, but if it could be back to where we were, we would, we'd be able to keep, keep going on, keep going forward. So, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at public, our public meeting? At this point, I would like to, where are we moving to? School choice? Do we have language on that vote?
So is the hearing being closed?
Yes. So just to get the school committee all on the same page, that was a vote by the committee on February 1st regarding school choice, but there had to be a public hearing prior to the vote. So, so what I would like to offer to those of you here today is if you have any comments that you would like to make regarding school choice, would you kindly come forward and the same procedure, state your name and make comments? The school choice vote that we took in February was that we did, we shut down school choice because we don't have space in our schools for additional students. Does anyone have, from the public, a comment about school choice? Seeing none? Do I have a vote?
I move that we do not extend school choice for the fiscal year 1970.
Academic year.
Yeah. FY17.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As have it. At this point, I would like to take a motion to adjourn the public hearing, and then we will start our school committee meeting.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is adjourned, and we will begin our business meeting in a few minutes. Do you want to take a couple minutes? Thank you. This day, April 26, 2016. It's in here somewhere, hold on. Here we go. Thank you. Mrs. Kennedy, would you kindly call the roll for the business meeting?
Mr. Cantor?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Present.
Mr. Holliday?
Present.
Thank you. This brings us to our public comment for our regular school committee business meeting. If there was something, if there's something you would like to address, could you please come up, state your name and your address, and try to keep your comments to about two minutes or less? Does anyone have a comment at this time? No, hearing none, we're going to move on. Do we have a consent agenda, Mr. Menon?
Warrants.
Warrants and minutes.
I move that the following named bills of Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $35,526.09 to be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment of again or no conflicts on that.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I move that the following named bills of Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $410,411.09 to be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment of again or no conflicts on that.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Is that it, Mr. Menon? I'd like to call the committee's attention now to the Newburyport School Committee Business Meeting, minutes of Monday, March 21st.
I move approval of the minutes of Monday, April, I'm sorry.
March 21st.
March 21st.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Corrections? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Present? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Present? I wasn't here. Mrs. Kennedy, should be present vote for each of us, because Cheryl and I were not at that last meeting. Thank you. So I vote present, and I wasn't there. We have already done the vote in our public hearing session to opt out of school choice, which is consistent with the vote that this committee took earlier in the year. We are now on to a, in our time, a conversation about our budget for next year, so I'd like to open up that discussion. I don't know if the superintendent wants to start that.
I really want to start out and let me invite, Mrs. Lysak, come, come back up and join me. I do want to say that despite the challenging, the challenges that we've had this year, there are some really good things happening in the Newburyport Public Schools, and I want to remind people of that. And I think, does everyone have this? No? This, yes. In, I'm not going to read the letter that, that I started off with to the Newburyport community, but on the back of that letter, I've listed some of the things that we all should be proud of. There's a lot of good things happening here. And yes, these, these are challenging times, but we're, we're still making some really good things happen for the boys and girls in the Newburyport Public Schools, so I do want to make that point. What we have handed out to you is, is a lot more detail on the budget in the packet that the members in the community and in the audience have received, as well as members of the school committee. And I'm going to just briefly walk you through that. School committee, I know, is going to need time to take a look at that, as is the community, to be able to get back to myself or members of the school- And I'm going to just briefly walk you through that. School committee, I know, is going to need time to take a look at that, as is the community, to be able to get back to myself or members of the school committee with questions. The revenue and expenses, we list for you. Again, it's more detail than in the overview that I gave earlier. It shows you the appropriations from the city, all the choice tuition, the fund balance, our grants, Title I, what we received from the Swayze Foundation. And then we also, you see our total revenue and then you see our total expenses as well. And there's, there is much more detail that is in this budget, again. I just want to, I want to read this one more time. I want to read the mission statement of the Newburyport Public Schools because it is a new mission statement for us this year. It is one that I am incredibly proud of. It was developed by students, staff, community members, parents, school committee members, teachers and administrators. The mission of the Newburyport Public Schools, the port where tradition and innovation converge, is to ensure each student achieves intellectual and personal excellence and is equipped for life experiences through a system distinguished by students, staff and community who practice kindness and perseverance, celebrate each unique individual, value creativity, experiential, rigorous educational opportunities, scholarly pursuits and lifelong learning, and provide the nurturing environments for emotional, social and physical growth, and understand and embrace their role as global citizens. That's the mission that we have in the Newburyport Public Schools. We've given you a brief organizational chart. Again, the next slide that you see in your packet is the additional revenue where we have received funds from. Federal and state grants make up 67% of the revenue that we receive. We are very fortunate to have the Swayze Foundation that provides over $90,000 worth of professional development for our teachers each year. The Newburyport Education Foundation, which I have yet to talk with another school superintendent who has anything like the Newburyport Education Foundation and the amount of money that they have contributed over the last, in particular, 10 years. We have budgeted in 2016, $332,000 that they will be donating to the, that they'll donate to the public schools. PTO, also very generous in the funds that they contribute to, in particular, the field trips that our students attend. Again, your next slide is just the grant revenue to give you an idea of the picture from 2011 through 2016.
I'm sorry, Nancy, these numbers don't match.
No, some of the grants are specific things, like the health grant, we really can't use as revenue, it's tied to something else. So there might be some grants that are tied to specific things.
You might want to put an asterisk there.
Sure.
Because the numbers aren't matching.
Yep.
Thank you.
Cost centers, we've tried to give you, give you a visual representation of the cost Systemwide, all of our schools, our maintenance, our special education and also benefits. Organizational chart. One more time, a summary of the budget. And then taking a look at specific detail in our systemwide, beginning with that. And again, you'll see that we, that we break down our budget into professional salaries, contracted services, supplies and materials. I mean, you can see all of the categories that are there. And we've given you cost comparisons, 15, 16, 17, so you can compare over a three-year period. And also what the increase and decrease is within each particular line item. Again, it's just curriculum, in-service, school lunch, data processing, transportation, safety, our English language learners, our heating, ventilation and air conditioning, which Mr. Bergholm is here and is going to be talking about a little bit later, and the energy savings that we have seen through efforts on his part and on the custodial staff and the maintenance staff. Non-salary benefits, school committee, central administration. Again, and then a summary by program, which is systemwide. And you can look at all of the different categories that we have. Curriculum, technology, psychology, transportation. I mean, I'm, I don't have to read all of those to you. You can see the percentage of change, either increase or decrease in each area. And then, then the budget is broken down by school. We have tried this year and worked closely with the city's finance department to make our budget more in line with what the city has done in other departments, and I think that we're getting there.
Yes.
We're getting there.
Thank you.
And we have provided some detail for you on Bresnahan. And I have the principals here from Bresnahan tonight, but the first part that they have provided you with is really a focus on their school improvement plan. Correct?
Yes.
And the school improvement plan is really what drives a lot of the funding requests, that the principals work with their staff, then they come and present to the entire leadership team, and all of the principals do this, but Bresnahan has done a nice job of showing you exactly where their focus has been and will be, and why some of the budget requests The school improvement plans have been presented to the school committee much earlier in the year. Some of this information, for those of you in the audience, may be brand new to you, but it outlines what the school's focus is. Then you have a breakdown of the entire Bresnahan budget. And then a summary by programs. And we, when we get to programs at the building level, we break them down by grade level and also by the area in, in which there might be a particular focus, such as Title I, math intervention, technology, music, art, PE. So we break it down by category as well as by grade level.
I'm sorry, so is the information that is in here, for example, for music, does that represent a portion of what's already covered in grade 1, and grade 2, and grade 3? Or is music just for music and the grade 1, 2 and 3 are related to the cost of programs in each individual classroom?
Music is music across the school.
Okay.
And the grade 1 would be just that, grade level.
Grade level, including music or not music?
No. Music is broken out by itself, same as art and PE.
That's what I was trying to figure out here because obviously some of the programs cover.
Good question.
Individual classes as well.
Then, onto Mullen. Again, you, you have the organizational chart at Mullen, our upper elementary. You have Mullen's school improver plan, the things that they have worked on, the accomplishments that have occurred at Mullen in 2016, the number of staff at Mullen, the goals that they have had, and programs and services that are outside of their core curriculum they have listed. Again, you have the Mullen budget. It is broken down in the same manner as the Bresnahan budget. The summary is again by grade level as well as the individual areas. We move on to Knox Middle School. Again, same format, accomplishments, the number of staffing that we have at every position, the goals and objectives that they have been focused on, as well as the things that they are working on outside of the core curriculum. Their budget, again, broken down by line item, as well as a summary by their programs. On to the high school. And it's the same format for the high school as it has been for the other schools. So it's a lot of information. And obviously, folks are going to need time to really look through, to ask individual questions. And same, I would certainly offer to anybody sitting in the audience tonight, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to my office and to me and send me an email or pick up the phone, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the public may have, as well as individual members of the school committee or the city council.
Susan, would you be so kind as, a lot of comments were made during the hearing about, you know, some, some significant changes in school size, and that is something that we have not talked about.
Class size.
Class size, as being an issue this year in this budget at all. Could you please address that?
I, I can't. I'm actually going to look right at Christina Davis and ask her to share with the group the class sizes at Bresnahan projected for next year.
So currently in kindergarten, there are 136 students. When we check for first grade, we typically add 10 to 12 additional students because we anticipate 10 to 12 students will register between now and the fall. Currently, we do not have any newly registered students. So I'm planning on 146 students approximately. That yields seven sections of 21 students if we have 10 additional students. For second grade, we currently have 135 students. The numbers that we heard this evening are not quite accurate. I think those numbers may have been based on this year's current second grade class, which is quite large. But the incoming second grade class is currently at 135 students. So at six sections, there will be approximately 22 or 23 students per class because it's equivalent to 22.5. And in third grade, there are currently 174 students in second. So in third, we're looking at eight sections for 21.75 students per section.
Thank you.
And typically, we see many students registering at this current time for next year. We have not seen activity as of yet.
Okay. Great. So you said we currently have 174 second grade students, who are going to become 174 third grade students next year?
Yes.
And how many third grade students do we have right now?
I didn't bring that with me. I'm not, I, I don't know.
So how many sections of third grade do we have now?
We currently have seven sections of third grade right now.
So we're going to go from seven to eight sections. Projected.
Projected, in third grade to fourth grade.
No.
Second to third.
From this year's, from this year's third grade to next year's third grade, it's going to go from seven to eight sections. Okay. This year, you said we have seven sections of third grade. Next year, you're projecting eight sections of third grade.
We're going to have, yes, correct.
So we're going to add, we are going to add a section of third grade next year?
Yes, yes. I don't know why that's.
So, so I, I think, I think the idea of class sizes going up is that on the list, oh, wait. I think the idea of class sizes going up is on the list, there was a reduction of a second grade teacher, I think.
Correct.
And so if you take a teacher out of the two?
Out of the two.
No, sorry, there were people, tell me that I'm wrong. It says one second grade teacher.
Correct.
On the projected reduction.
Mm-hmm.
I was just, sorry, it's looking behind, just some people were saying second. So if you take a teacher out of the mix.
Yes.
But you add a section to third grade, people are trying to figure out how that doesn't increase class sizes.
How it doesn't.
That's right.
Well.
The kids are still there, they're just going to a new grade. So I would think that the teacher would travel with the bubble class.
It is. That's what's happening.
Currently, in second grade, our numbers range from 20 students to 23 per section in second grade right now. The majority of them are at 22 per section.
Okay.
Does that help?
It does. I still, I'm still missing something here.
I think the people who were speaking were more concerned about the second grade class.
That, and that's what I was just addressing.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just thinking about overall across the school.
Because the first grade class is currently lower than the current second grade class. And people, and that's what I was addressing earlier. I think what was misunderstood is that this year's second grade class is very high, and that's why the third grade class is bumping up a section.
Correct.
David?
Does that make sense?
It does to me. I understand that. People are trying to figure out how we're bumping up a section and losing a teacher.
Angela, did you have clarity for that?
Bumping up a section and losing a teacher. Okay.
Yes.
So we are bumping up a section in third.
Third grade. It seems like we're keeping the sections and, well, we're going down a section in second grade.
Second is going to third.
Second is going to third.
We're going down two sections.
In second grade.
In second grade.
One is a, a loss and one is going to third grade.
Correct.
That makes sense.
We currently have eight sections.
And first grade is generally static.
Same, same. It's remaining at seven.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, thank you. I have to say that during public comment tonight, when people started throwing around concerns about increased class size, that really concerned me because we haven't had that discussion as a school committee, and I echo the mayor's comments, which led to her question. And I just would like to really simplify this and ask that if we could have some graphic that specifies what the average class size is for each grade, so that at a glance, we can see that and make our own observations about what the progressions are in the past. We've done that before, we need to do it again. We've also met as a school committee and voted on class size guidelines. And, you know, I would welcome that. I would welcome a regular review of that as well, given the public's concern about class size. But I'd like to start with just a simple, at-a-glance document that everybody can see and understand, so that we're not figuring out the Peters that are getting robbed to pay Paul. I, I think this will all, if you put it on paper, it'll all be very clear. Thank you. What's that?
We have that.
No, but we don't.
Yeah, we don't.
We don't have it here tonight.
Well, this is, you know, again, having been on the school committee for 11 years, having had those discussions about class size guidelines, I've heard from a lot of constituents tonight concerned about it. So I really want, I would like that information so I can, you know, understand it and then articulate back to the people that I represent. Thanks.
We're happy to provide that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Questions, comments, school committee members?
I know it's a long time, so.
We'll have time on Monday night at our next school committee meeting to be able to really go through other questions or concerns and, you know, obviously email, send information in advance so that we can address that and be able to send it out to the entire school committee before our next school committee meeting.
Any questions that you have, please don't hesitate to reach out and to ask, and I'm happy to provide more information that anyone requests.
Anything further from the committee?
It is our, our intent now to take a vote on this budget the next time the school committee meets, which is next Monday. meets, which is next Monday night. So if you do have questions or thoughts that you would like to communicate to any of us, our email addresses are duly posted. We would like to hear from you. We are intending to hold off this vote so that we can get as much public input as we can. And we will be voting next Monday night. The budget is due into the mayor by the first week in May, so she has graciously let us have this extra week to.
The budget should be in my hands already. So we've got to get it to the printer. But we've given an exception because we had a, a snow day and other things. So we're, you know, stringing it out a little bit. But the budget has to be presented on May 9th to the school committee. Otherwise, it won't be passed.
City council.
Oh, sorry. City council, in order for it to be passed in time for the start of the fiscal year.
But this committee feels very strongly that we need to have, you know, at least a week to go over figures, ask questions, have them answered. And we're giving you that same opportunity. So we encourage you, if, you know, you have a thought after you leave tonight, please let someone know. Any, any further on the budget for this evening?
Can someone clarify? Because I heard another comment that came up a bunch of times, people urging us to not vote for the budget. Can you clarify for people what, what that, what they're asking? What does that process look like?
Well, it, it happens every year. It happens every year that people are, you know, they, they don't want, you know, a budget that is, you know, I mean, we're at 3.4% and that's all I have. I mean, we have spent months going back and forth over this budget. And despite the increase in chapter 70 funding, you know, we end up with only netting about $37,000. We are, we have a reserve. Why is that? Because that's what, the top goes to the charter school.
Get that in public.
Yeah. So, you know, we have gone backwards, forwards in terms of this budget. And, you know, you know, education is the largest piece of our budget. It's 60% of the budget now in terms of, and that does include our assessment to Whittier, which is relatively flat. It's only increased a little bit this year, as well as we did find out that we have three potential students at North Shore Tech. And so that's, you know, $50,000 we have to account for. But that, again, is carried outside of the operation of the budget. And we have pulled everything we can out of the operation of the school budget. Capital needs, as you saw, pensions, health insurance. We carry some maintenance costs. We carry a lot. We provide grant support. So we are just providing, you know, just for the, this budget is just operations. And that's, you know, there, there isn't any more money to do that. You know, the, the city side has, and I have tried very hard not to talk about sides because it is all one city and this is our education pie. And, you know, I think we have worked as a finance team within the schools and with the city for the past seven years, working very hard to put more and more money into the operations of the budget. The past seven years, that's been an increase of almost 30% that the city has given to the schools. In addition to the capital needs, health insurance has gone up, health insurance is going up anywhere. And also, you know, really fighting for the additional school building projects and thank the community for stepping up in a huge way for that. And, I mean, this is, this is where we are. As Susan said earlier, the, the biggest expense in both city budget and in the school budget is personnel. It's what it is. We need to continue to advocate with, we'll be doing a resolution shortly for them to fund, we will not see, we were at actually a mayor's meeting today with Roger Hatch, who, thank you for your wonderful chapter 70 formula. But they made adjustments to it in '07. There is tremendous support for keeping chapter 70 the way it is and looking at three other areas. One is special education, which is hurting all districts across the state in terms of, you know, because the needs are, are greater. And, you know, they're trying to look at that figure a little bit differently than they have, which hopefully. We also have, you know, ELL students who are also not necessarily in Newburyport, but that's been a big issue in terms of the state budget. And then, of course, the charter school debate at this, at this juncture. And the state really doesn't feel at this point that they're going to be able to, you know, talk to the senators, be able to resolve the ballot question before November. And so it's going to be up to the voters to make a decision about whether or not, you know, we raise the cap or not. I mean, they're trying to do a compromise bill and I appreciate some of the language in it. But, you know, we have got to find a better way to fund charter schools so it's not, you know, funding isn't coming out of our, our budget. You know, there just isn't any more funding. It's, it's not that you can just reject the budget. So what do I close? Fire station? And we got one. You know, we still need two or three more fire, firemen. We could use six more people in our highway department. Everyone's screaming about roads and sidewalks. I have one staff. I have one staff. That's all. To, you know, and we work damn hard in terms of making the, you know, the needs of the city. We have probably, I think we're down two positions in the police department. We're not filling those. And you know what's going on with all the opioid and heroin issues in, in the communities. I mean, we have tremendous needs there. Everybody, we, we've downsized our treasurer's office. We've downsized, I mean, there is no more, I mean, nobody has any extra personnel in any office in city hall. So, you know, standing here and saying, don't pass this budget, there's no money anywhere else. There is no money anywhere else. People talk about a garage. That's not from taxes. The garage is all done with an earmark and with parking revenues that don't come off the backs of taxpayers. Those are the projects that we've done in the city are from grants or CPC funding. They're not off the backs of taxpayers, taking money out of the school budget. We just keep putting money back into the school budget. But there just is not any more money in the city to, to increase this beyond what we did. You know, I, you, one year, we were able to give 8% increase. I don't have that this year in the budget. I don't have that kind of local aid coming in. The one thing that I reminded people from Department of Education today is that when we supported casino gambling, what was the promise they made? 20% of those revenues would come to education. Those are the fights we need to make in terms of insisting that that 20% does come to education because we are a minimum foundation budget. We are required to fund the schools with $19 million. That's what our requirement is. We are now at over $30 million in terms, and that's just operations. That doesn't include, as I said, capital needs, pension, health insurance benefits, the other things that are carried outside of the operating budget. And we do that deliberately just to continue to put as much money into operations. So us rejecting this budget, there's, I'll still submit it to the council because I have to submit a balanced budget. So you can take the stands that you won't support the budget, but there is no more money. If anything comes out of the Senate's budget, you know, when they reviewed the budget, because talking to our, our, our state reps last week, thanked them for their increase in chapter 70, but said to Senator Lovely, who was standing there, you can't let the House show you up. You got to put some more money in chapter 70. They're not following the recommendations of the chapter 70, you know, public hearings that went out across the state. So we're asking in our resolution that other communities are doing, as well as the Senate, to put some more money in chapter 70. I mean, that's the, the reality of where we are.
Thank you.
Anything further from the committee?
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, community use of facilities and field policy.
Thank you.
You have in your packets a couple of letters.
Before everyone disappears, I just wanted to publicly extend my sincerest thanks to the leadership team at the schools for working really hard on this budget. And especially to Nancy Lysek, who is, has just listened to me rant and rave about the format and readability of this budget. And she has just really stepped it up. And I thank you very, very much for all your work, Nancy.
Agreed. She's got her coat. She's got her coat. No, sitting down?
We have books from Sean.
Yeah.
And from Kim.
Right.
And, um.
Sean is here.
Is it appropriate to have Carl address some of this?
To have who?
Carl?
Kyle.
Kyle, address some of this?
We certainly can ask him to weigh in. We certainly can ask him to weigh in.
We have two presenters this evening. One is Sean Rich, Richmond. So we'll start there, please. Do you want to wait till your audience, well, they left you.
There's love over here for you.
I'm Sean Richmond. I live at 11 Almeyer Avenue. I've been a resident in Newport for 35 years. I am one of several volunteer baseball coaches at the Newport Bay Brew program. We're coming here representing tonight. I'm here to talk to you about the current situation of our only 60-foot, 90-foot baseball field, which is located in Newport High School. We currently have eight baseball teams vying for time on this field. Newport High School baseball, which is comprised of the freshman team, the JV team, and the varsity team, have the priority of this field, which, which they deserve and deserve to use that field. Takes up the majority of the weekday and Saturday availability. This has led the Bay Ruth coaches and players to practice on empty basketball courts, tennis courts, and even sometimes empty parking lots. This season, Newport Bay Ruth program has grown from three teams to four teams, which is a great sign for our program. We want to make this a positive experience for our players, but more importantly, a safe one as well. There's currently a school committee rule in place that only allows the Newport High School field to be utilized on Sundays from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. We are here as a coaching community to see if this committee would approve the field to be open on Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., which would allow for the Bay Ruth teams to fit in scheduled games and a potential for practice here and there. We would only be looking for this, for these time changes on Sundays until we feel behind the rock and available and in use. With that, I appreciate your time.
Mr. Mannin?
I have a question. You said that, I just want to make sure that I understand. You might have misspoken. You said you were asking us to consider opening the field from 10:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. or 10:00 a.m.?
I'm sorry. 10:00, 10:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Sorry.
Mr. Hatch?
Two questions.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. One is about the, the fields over on Merrimack. Are those not yours?
That's Pioneer. That's, that's, it's a different sized baseball field for different.
It's not a varsity size.
Okay, so those are little smaller fields.
Yeah, correct. We need a 60-90 for this.
That's why we built the, because the only one we had was where we built the new school. And so even though that was a horrible field, it was still a baseball field of some sort. You can still call it that. You can kind of recognize the remnants of a diamond.
I always liked the way the baseball balls did.
And the blood on your knees when you sled. But, but so next year, we'll have, that's why we built the Richie Eaton Field, which will be ready next year.
Is it the same for the one by Cashville Park?
So that is, that is also a youth-sized baseball field. So it's, it's, it's not the, it's not the right dimension for.
Okay. And the, the new field is going to be open?
It has to sit a season.
Right, so next?
Next spring.
Spring of 2017?
Correct.
So right now, the high school is the only field that is the right size?
Only 60-90 baseball field that's available for our Bay, Bay Ruth, Bay Ruth, yes.
Are we still using pipe still?
We have to be 14, 14, 13 and 14. Seven and eight, great.
Are we still going over to West Newbury? The high school? No, we're not using the pipe?
Pipe stave.
Thank you. Pipe stave, we're not using that this year? Okay. So that makes even less access.
Do you anticipate that, that the games will, the games and practices will run to 7:30?
I would, I would say, I would say yes, that the field will be utilized to its full capacity.
How many more weeks is in your season?
We go through, this year, we'll go through the end of July.
It, it does occur to me that we've had individual sports come in front of us more than once this year. And we do have a stated school committee policy. So, and I know we have another one coming up right after you for track, I believe. Right. But, but still, you know, use of our fields and, and a different timeframe. So I was just going to ask if, if our athletic director would like to address any of this. And then Mr. Decanter is the chair of our policy committee, so I'm going to.
Would you like me to come up?
Sure. Come on up.
No, no. Just stay right there. He's going to take the other side.
Am I out?
Not yet.
The Sunday use by our youth programs here would have no impact on our high school programs. You hear balls bouncing in the gym now. Our youth just does not have enough time. We don't have enough facilities. We have one field right now for three teams in the high school and we, we struggle to make that work for three teams. So if, if they have eight teams or however many teams at different levels that they have, in a four-hour window, they're, they're not even getting two games in. So the strength of our success in the future is directly related to our youth. So I'm obviously going to promote anything that will give our young athletes a chance to participate. That's not speaking, I, I don't know the history behind the, the 1 o'clock to 5 o'clock policy, but there is definitely a need for this group to use it. And it doesn't impact, it will, it will probably help the high school program in the long run because maybe they won't be needing our time during the week that they're requesting or on Saturdays. If, you know, if we had 24 hours of daylight, they would be requesting more time. I mean, we, we're using that from 2 o'clock after school until it gets dark right now. So I would, I would support that from an athletics standpoint.
Mr. Decanter?
Yeah, I was going to say that it seems to be a three times a year event that teams come to us asking for an extension to our schedules on Sunday mornings so that they can use the facilities, whether they be gyms, fields, track, whatever it might be. And I would like to recommend that in addition to taking a vote on this particular request, the committee refer this particular policy back to the policy subcommittee to see if this is really something that is still valid, if it's still an issue with the butters, if it's still an issue with other stakeholders, so that hopefully we can remove that from the books and not have to be doing this three times a year for, for, as each season begins. Because clearly, our needs right now are much greater than the facilities that we have to offer. And we need to do whatever we can to support the, the, the health and the enjoyment, the development of, of athletic skills of our kids. So I would, I would like to.
I would like to move to approve the Bay Ruth's temporary use of the baseball field through the end of July for the extended times from 10:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. on Sundays. Discussion.
Mr. Cole? Can we identify the, the last Sunday, just for the record? What, what's the last Sunday in July?
Sunday in July?
Yeah.
They're pulling out their phones.
It is the 31st of July. This is Sunday.
Can we, can we be optimistic and go through the middle?
Can I finish, please?
Sorry.
Is that Yankee Homecoming Weekend?
Starts then.
Okay. So you're scheduling, scheduling games for Yankee Homecoming Weekend?
Yeah, we, we never do. I've been in the program 18 years. It's a league. Yankee Homecoming Weeks, daily.
You're Mr. South Hill?
No.
Oh.
Mike Quinn.
Okay, sure, okay.
South Hill is out of Georgetown.
Right, okay. But it's a brotherhood. Okay.
Okay, so you don't think you'd need the 31st? You don't think you'd need the 31st, then?
If that's Yankee Homecoming Week, we wouldn't use it, so.
So let's do the week.
24th?
Yeah.
Anything further, Mr. Decanter?
So I'm going to be the optimist in the group. What happens if we make the playoffs? Are you coming back to ask for more time?
That's, that's all right, then.
That includes the playoffs?
Yeah, that would take a stretch.
I'm more optimistic than you. We're in the game.
Good answer. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. Now get a baseball fundraiser going.
You love it, I mean.
There comes Kim.
Next, we have...
Kim Spinney.
Kim Spinney, who would like to address us about the Special Olympics track team.
So I'm the program coordinator for the Newport Bay Blue's Special Olympics track team, and we typically practice on Sundays at the Fuller Field Track. Presently, the lacrosse, the youth lacrosse league has it for bulk of the day, and we were hoping that we could maybe get permission to use the track from 10:00 to 11:00, May 1st to June 5th. We have approximately 22 athletes and maybe another 20 volunteers. It's a great spot for us, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have discussion? Did you say discussion now? Discussion. We've, we've allowed this every year. I think it's important. Yeah, I think it's great.
I can report that we've never had an issue with any of the Butters.
No, I think this is great. It's a great program. It's wonderful. Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all your work, too, Kim. Maintenance report. Next on our agenda, Bresnahan and Knoc Molen maintenance report. So that must be you, Mr. Bergholm. Thank you for your patience this evening.
My pleasure. I believe these were distributed to...
They were.
I'll have to, I brought a few extras, but I don't have enough for everybody. So I was asked to come here this evening to talk both about the maintenance we've been experiencing in the new school and the renovated Knoc Molen, as well as our energy usage and any savings that we may or may not have been experiencing in those areas. So I can start with the maintenance report that, that I distributed. If you look at the first page of that, I've broken it out into a couple of different sections of the facilities department budget, first being contracted services, and that, that we generally use for any unplanned repairs that come up during the year, maybe some minor projects, adding an outlet here and there for, you know, whatever staff might need. And if you looked at the chart of FY14, between the Bresnahan and Brown budgets, we had a total of $24,000 budgeted for those purposes. In the proposed FY17 budget, we're only looking for $12,000. So there's, you know, there's obviously not as great a need for those kind of repairs at this point with those buildings just having been built and renovated, so, you know, we're able to shave that down there. Same sort of scenario for Knoc Molen. We used to have $20,000 in the budget back in FY14, and for FY17, we've knocked that down to $16,000. The next section of the budget is the building contract and services, or I refer to it more as our, our service contract section of the budget. And this is kind of flip-flop from, from the other section, because now, now that we've got more newer equipment to maintain and service, we've got more things going on in the schools, there are more service contracts that we need to have, more things we need to have inspected, more stuff going on. So that's used for things like monthly elevator service, pest control services, cleaning out the grease traps a couple of times a year. So back in FY14, between Brown and Bresnahan, we only had about $10,000 in the budget for those sort of things. But with the new school, we have that at $22,000. There's just much more equipment to take care of, many more things to deal with. And there's a whole, if you look at the, the last page of that report, there's a whole list of what's included in that number, all the different systems and services that we include in those numbers. Same for Knoc Molen. We've had to increase that a little bit between FY14 and FY17 to take care of all of that equipment there. Turning to the second page, the first chart is just some miscellaneous information. FY14, we had 2.4 full-time equivalents in the maintenance department, and now up to three full-time equivalents. That third one came on, the third full-time one started with this budget, with the FY16 Completed work requests. FY14, that full year, we only recorded 491 total work requests for that year. And to date for FY16, we've done over 1,500. That's a little bit deceiving in that, it's kind of really deceiving, because we actually are pushing staff to use the computerized maintenance request system much more than we did three years ago. You know, my staff is, is trained to very politely tell staff that they can't do any requests without having a work order, so that we can have things recorded and keep track of things a little bit better. And also, we're doing more preventive maintenance work requests that are automatically generated. So we're, we're producing more work requests through the work order system than we did three years ago. And facilities department budget, when calculated out per square foot of, of building space that we have, is, is nearly identical now to what it was three years ago. So looking at some different categories of types of work requests in that bottom chart on the second page, some kind of interesting facts there. Of all of the electrical work requests that we've done so far this year, 20% of them have been at Bresnahan, 20% at Knoc Molen, and 60% sent at the high school, which you would sort of expect, because the high school's older lighting systems requires more maintenance because it's older. Plumbing, on the other hand, 15% at Bresnahan, 45% at Knoc Molen, and 40% at the high school. We've had some issues at Knoc Molen with some of the automatic flush valves and faucets that were installed. They've, they've required quite a bit of service. We've been able to get the manufacturer to continue sending us the parts at no charge. Our guys are doing the work, but it's producing more work requests. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning work requests higher at Bresnahan and Knoc Molen than at the high school. That sort of indicates that we've, at the high school, we've been operating the system here for 12, 14 years now, since the building reopened. We're still working out bugs at both Bresnahan and Knoc Molen. So we get more work requests about temperature issues in classrooms and other spaces, so that, those are naturally higher. And doors and hardware, fairly even across the board, a little bit higher at Bresnahan. We're having some issues with exterior doors, and those require a little bit of extra work. Again, we're working with the manufacturer to get parts and technicians out to adjust things for us, so, you know, it's, it's just the new, newer buildings, new systems, still working out some kinks, but, but we're getting there. So any questions on...
This is all the...
Yes, Mr. Paul.
This is all the budgeted usage numbers, correct?
I'll go into the, the energy report next. That was more on the maintenance.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Thanks.
Steve, I have a question. Why do we have service contracts on bleachers?
It's a safety check to make sure, they're, they're all motorized, have electrical operators on them, so there's a company that comes out and does a safety check on them once a year.
That's at Knoc Molen, the new ones that were put in?
Yep, Knoc Molen and the high school.
In the gym, those are motorized also. Okay. And one other question in terms of the grease trap thing, why so expensive? It's much more at Bresnahan?
Bresnahan.
When we have more students at high school?
It's, Bresnahan has more grease traps. It has a very large outdoor 5,000-gallon grease trap that the other schools do not have.
New building codes. New construction.
It's new building codes. In addition to that, it has three grease traps inside the kitchen.
Those pipes are going to last forever.
They do. And we clean them out, and they're not very, they're not very, we clean them out twice a year, and they're, they're not bad, so.
Thank you, Steve.
And then the high school and middle school has two grease traps, so there's a big difference in the number of grease traps and the sizes.
Okay.
Anything else on the maintenance? Okay, the energy usage report. I'm going to start about the, on the, the second page in the heating and electricity budget comparison.
It's pretty impressive.
Quick showing of where we, where we've been and where we've gone, bringing those numbers down. It's been a general trend downward, a little bump up last year as we're getting to know the buildings and, and what needs to be budgeted, but we're able to bring that back down for FY17. And then if you turn to the next page, this is showing our electricity, our electricity usage has dropped over the years. And if you look at the two last years, FY15 and FY16, and the last column, the kilowatt-hours per square foot, other than FY13, those are two of the best years that we've had in electricity usage, the lowest usage per square foot. FY13 was just a, a really good year for some reason. And I think those numbers can come down more. We just did some energy projects here at the high school, thanks to a Green Communities grant, where we replaced some lighting, both interior and exterior, did some weather sealing up in the attic and around the perimeter classroom windows, and some ventilation controls and various things that we think are going to reduce both our, our electricity and natural gas usage here. So I'll be interested to see the numbers on that next year, how our usage is. Moving on to Bresnahan, on a page called Bresnahan Utility Budget and Usage Comparison. And I compare all through this, I compare, I compare the old Brown, the Brown School and the old Bresnahan to the new Bresnahan, since the new Bresnahan replaced both of those buildings. If you look at the FY14, what we had budgeted for FY14 was about $158,000. Those two buildings combined were 90,000 square feet, so that worked out to about $1.77 per square foot for both heat and electricity. FY17 budget...
Yeah. How do you know it worked out to $1.77?
$158,000.
Right, but those, and I'm not trying to, those are budgeted numbers. I guess, I'm interested in the actuals.
That's true. Yeah, I mean, we can go back and, and dig up the numbers for what was actually spent.
Okay. I think that's important, given this is a budget discussion, but, okay, thank you.
Okay. So the proposed budget for FY17 is, is virtually the same, but the new Bresnahan school is larger, more square footage, so it actually works out to $1.41 per square foot. And on the bottom half of that page, if you look at the actual usage, Brown School was heated by heating oil, so we used on average about almost 14,000 gallons of heating oil a year for that school, and at the old Bresnahan, we were using about 38,000 terms of natural gas. Compare that to the new Bresnahan school, natural gas, we're using less than 30,000 on average per year to this point. And we've had two very extreme years winter-wise. FY15 was a very cold year, and FY16 was a very warm winter, so we've... And had both ends of the spectrum, and we're looking forward to something a little more Electricity usage, on the other hand, in the new building is more than doubled what it was in the two old buildings, and the reason for that is because of the mechanical systems. We have much more ventilation in the new building, much more mechanical system, so we're, we're running more equipment. It's a healthier building, you know, getting, getting more fresh air, but you're naturally using more electricity in the process.
Steve, do you also think that the additional technology also has somewhat of an impact?
Yeah, there is. There's definitely more technology in the buildings, more, more computers, more, more of everything in the building, and it's a bigger building, so there's more lighting. Following page is just more detail that I won't get into unless anybody wants to, huh, more detail. Knoc Molen, similar kind of comparison, our budget for FY14 was $207,000, whereas our budget for FY17 is $178,000 for heat and electricity. We've seen a pretty good reduction there. And we're, you know, we're still in a period where we're still, we still don't have a lot of history on this building, the usage. So the only real full years that we have of, of data operating on the total new systems are FY15 and FY16. And you can see under the natural gas chart there that, you know, we used a lot more natural gas in FY15 than we did in FY16, but that was because it was so much colder. But if you figure it out and how much we used per heating degree day, it looks like we got, we did a bit better in FY16 than we did in FY15. You know, as we, as we, you know, learn to use this, this building management systems better, we should be able to be more efficient in how these systems are operated and continue to bring those down. And below that, you can see the electricity usage. And below that, you can see the electricity usage. In FY '16, it looks like we're gonna have a much higher percentage of our electricity from the solar array than we did in the past couple of years, just because the whole system's back up and operating now more than it was in the past, and everything is functioning properly. Any questions on Knockmullen, while we're here before I move on to the high school? So in the high school, you can see that we've been able to drop the budget a little bit by $10,000 between FY '14 and FY '17. As I mentioned earlier, we did do energy projects earlier this winter, and hopefully we will see some, I'm sure we'll see some positive results from those. There's already been some good feedback from staff up on the second, third floor, who said that they could definitely feel the difference in the draftiness of those classrooms up there after that was done. It was almost instantaneous, so. And we also noticed over a very cold weekend that the temperatures up there did not drop as they had been in the past in the classroom. So we've seen some and heard about some good results from those projects. So looking forward to getting more data from that and seeing where we are. So, you know, overall, I think we're doing pretty good. We continue to find ways, there's a lot more lighting in this building, some converted LEDs. The lighting systems in here are 14 years old, which, you know, really doesn't seem that old, but technologies have improved, so if we can find the money to invest...
So attractive.
Yeah. If we can find the money to invest in these projects, you know, it's gonna save us more in the long run. Any more questions?
Let me ask you a general question. When we had to freeze the budget, it appeared that a significant amount of the money came from operation of plant. Can you tell me how that impacts us for the rest of this year, or where that savings came from, or?
That came from utilities. Because we had such a mild winter...
Exactly what he was talking about.
We were well under budget in our natural gas and electricity line, so that was at all.
I just wanted to clarify that.
So it doesn't affect, you know, the rest of my budget, taking care of things for the rest of the year.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Any other questions for Steve? Great report. Oh, Bruce, comment?
It's almost supernatural, Steve, that every year you come...
He's the only one.
I've got savings. I just, I know that there's only a finite amount of efficiency you can extract, and in all these years, I have not seen reach that final point, which is astounding to me.
It is, it's great.
Well, I'll try to keep it going, but...
We have high expectations for you, Steve.
It's, you know, we've plucked all of the low hanging fruit.
Problem.
It takes an investment to keep it moving.
He can only be a wizard so long without us investing somewhat capital.
What I'm saying, I'm amazed that it's lasted this long, and at some point, we will reach a stage of savings.
Mother Nature has a very big impact on your budget as well.
She does, yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bergholm, if you could just walk me through the FY '16 photovoltaic system production, because I do have a couple of questions. I just wanna understand it. It's on the very last page of this report, I believe, or not, not the last page.
Last page in the Knockmullen section.
Last page of the Knockmullen section. Is it okay to go ask you this, or?
Certainly.
Okay, all right. So I see that in the history, the cost of kilowatt hours has gradually crept up, that's with the contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I also...
Five percent.
Right, yeah, four or five percent, something like that. Yeah, it's accelerated according to that. Just what I'm trying to understand is the increase in the supply cost there that we saw beginning in December of 2015, is there, who, how did that, or why did that increase?
Okay, I see what you're talking about.
Went from a .071 to a .093.
Yeah, when we did the renovation project at the middle school, there were, there were two electrical services on that building. Those were pulled out and a new service was installed, and in that process, we ended up with what was essentially a new account number for National Grid. And so that disqualified us from buying our electricity supply through the contract that we had with Constellation New Energy. So we had to go on to the default rate from National Grid for a period of time until we could get back onto the next contract with Constellation.
Okay, okay. And fair to say that the last three months of, I guess fiscal '16, April, May, and June, those are projected numbers, correct?
Correct.
The output numbers?
Yes.
Okay, and so just looking at this body of column statistics, the solar utility variance that you mentioned, 1.67, 1.46, that's actually, that's in the black, if you will, that number?
Yes, and this is somewhat theoretical.
Right.
But that's basically saying that solar electricity is saving us $1,600 this year versus buying it from the utility.
Provided, provided you reach those output numbers, which are...
Correct. Those are averages.
They're pretty high, actually. I think in the whole history here, since 2010, there might be three months that rival it, and those are in June, July, and August of 2013. Those are the only three months I can find that rival those three numbers, June, July, and August of 2013, where you had respectively...
Well, you've gotta, you've gotta, excuse me.
Yeah.
You've gotta compare it month to month, the same month, because you get, you get more sun in, you know, June than you do in February.
Sure.
So you've gotta compare the same month. So if you look back at, say...
But you got April and May here, you know, that's why I'm...
If you look back at, say, April in FY '12, look at those three months in FY '12, or 52,000 or 6,000.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair. I missed that, thank you. I really haven't had a whole lot of time to digest this, but thank you for explaining that, I appreciate it. I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Bergholm.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna move us along. I'm gonna turn this over to the superintendent, resolution calling for full funding of the foundation budget review commission recommendations.
And that's really...
Mr. Menon?
Yep. The second one. I thought it was clockwise and counterclockwise, but I didn't have a computer, so.
Turn it upside down, you'll be okay.
I was approached, actually, by Ed Cameron, city councilor Ed Cameron. He had asked me if we were going to approve a resolution that the city council itself had already approved, and a number of other city councils and town councils, and speaking of full funding of the foundation budget review commission's recommendations. So to that end, you've seen, you've seen, you've seen the motion, it's a resolution calling for full funding in the foundation review budget commission recommendation, which probably was reviewed through very quickly, just the resolution itself, not the rationale. Whereas the Massachusetts Foundation Budget Review Commission identified two areas, employee health insurance, special education, where the Massachusetts Foundation budget significantly understates the true cost of educating students in the Commonwealth and has failed to keep pace with rising costs, whereas this underfunding means the cost of providing quality education has increasingly been borne by local communities, most often at the expense of other vital municipal operations, whereas investing in education today leads to higher incomes and thus less investment in police, prisons, subsidized healthcare, low income housing, welfare, et cetera, in the future, whereas state and local economies are most effectively strengthened by investing in education and increasing the number of well-educated workers, therefore let it be resolved. Newburyport School Committee calls on the Massachusetts Legislature, the governor of Massachusetts to fully fund and adopt the recommendations for the foundation budget review commission in the future. That is the language of the motion, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Motion to approve.
Second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
The motion could be put in a minute exactly as if this were out there.
Except for where it says in certain name of local governing board, we put in the reports.
And so just to follow up, Susan, will you take responsibility for getting this to Boston, to get it to our senator?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we all supposed to sign it? So maybe we could sign it Monday night?
Yes.
And then send it off? How about that?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Superintendent's report is next.
And I just, I wanted to just bring to your attention that I have been in touch with, I believe you received a copy of the letter to Senator Ives in your packet regarding Senate Bill 2203, which is the rise bill, if you will, and I've provided you with some additional information on that. I just wanted you to be aware that I am really trying to stay on top of this issue with the charter schools. There's a lot of information, I actually sent you an update this afternoon.
Thank you.
And it's, it's pretty involved, there's a lot of, I want to say there's an attempt to provide some parity between what's expected of charter schools and how they are governed, and also with our public schools, so there's an attempt to bring more parity to that with, and I'm just gonna give you a couple of examples. Some specific language in it is, requires a charter school to make publicly available on the charter school's website contracts and leases for the procurement of services, equipment and supplies, and contracts for the management or operation of the school. Requires a charter school to disclose all partnerships, grants, and gifts on the charter school's website. So it's an attempt to have the same public records law that the public schools function under, to have the charter schools also function and be guided by the same principles, if you will. There's also a section that has to do with the governing board, and one of the things that I did want to point out to you, one of the recommendations that this joint committee is that it calls for, requires that both Commonwealth and Horace Mann Charter School Boards of Trustees include the following members: a full-time teacher, one elected or appointed member of the school committee from the sending district, 25% of the total membership, or two members, whichever is less, parents or guardians of students enrolled in the charter school, and one student if the charter school is a high school. So again, trying to keep things more in line with the expectations for public schools. There are probably 30 more pieces to this bill that, but I just, I want you to be aware that I am trying to stay very much on top of this. It was, at the last North Shore Superintendent's meeting, it was the only topic of discussion, and we had, we had invited senators and legislators to that meeting as well, it was very well attended. Suffice it to say that I think the superintendents had an opportunity to really educate members of the legislature that did not know a lot of detail about charter schools and about the differences. You know, there was a lot of surprise over the fact that I provided them with a five-year history of Newburyport's assessment of the charter school, and it comes right off the top, and there was a great deal of surprise over that. So I wanted you to be aware that this is something I'm gonna keep you updated on, and I will keep sending you information on this, because I do think that is something that is not going to go away. This may be a ballot initiative, you know, we don't know where that's going to go, but it is something that obviously affects both the charter schools and the public schools in which they are housed, and the communities in which they are housed, so.
And just to add to that, as a member of the Massachusetts Association's executive board, we also have an opportunity to read and review and bring in experts. We represent people all across the state, and we have reviewed this particular Senate bill. We also, six times a year, actually get to sit at the State House with the governor and lieutenant governor and have direct interaction. So that's another avenue that we'll continue, because everyone is feeling the same way. There's very few people who don't need more school funding. I don't know of a single community this year that isn't struggling, even when they're, you know, get, you know, a school district that gets a lot of Chapter 70 money, so. So between both of our efforts, we'll keep you both up to date on, you know, our advocacy towards this.
And what was our allocation to the charter school this year? You said you had a five-year...
1.9 million.
And what was it?
I think it's going up.
Yeah, it is, it's been going up.
It's going over two.
For next year?
Yeah.
So this year it's 1.9?
I'm happy to send that out to everybody tomorrow.
I would just like to see that. And do we have Newburyport student enrollment figures for those years?
I'm sure I can get, yeah, I can get them, yeah.
Just, I, I'm trying to do like pure per pupil cost, or just the ramifications of how much money this is.
Well, it's kinda how they figure it out.
Well, it would be helpful to, I thought we had like 60 students this year?
Oh, we have more than that. We have 155.
Oh, okay.
We have, they calculated on cost per student total district, whereas they only go to eighth grade, so there's, we're not really comparing apples to apples in that funding mechanism.
We have 155 students that are there out of 288.
Do you have any, like, the thing that surprises me about that enrollment is that we're there five sending districts to River Valley. We are, you know, left with such a bulk of the tuition payment. Is there another charter school with multiple sending districts like that that has such a disparity between sending channels?
Gloucester.
Usually when you're the host district, you're gonna get more enrollment.
Yeah, I mean, I assume that, but I mean, I think our enrollment is like almost 60%. I guess I'm surprised there's not.
The host district, if you look at them, has more.
The Mystic Valley and Malden is overwhelmingly Malden students, whereas we take from elsewhere.
And also, we provide transportation here in Newburyport, for the Newburyport students, where, you know, the other sending districts, families have to transport students to get them there, so.
Is that, I mean, is that the case? Because I thought that the charter school rules said that the sending districts all had to provide transportation.
I'm not positive about that. I know that here, I, you know what, I'm not positive about that, Kristina, I can't say for sure.
And is there something about the, because we pay a hosting fee also, it's not just the tuition?
Right.
And I've tried to find...
I asked for clarification, Ethan indicated, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, that it was just tuition, that we paid 50%, 52% or something of the total cost of the charter school, and that was based on the tuition.
I think there's another fee on top of that, another assessment on top of that.
I've asked a couple of times.
Okay.
No.
So if we could find out, because the way it's been explained a couple times here, that we pay like a little over a million in hosting fees, and then we pay per student tuition.
I don't think that's accurate, but...
Okay, that's what's been explained to us here at this table, so, a couple times.
Mr. Cole?
Nancy Lysek has a really good graphic on it, and matter of fact, a few years ago, I met with a couple of high school students doing a, on our civics project, and that's what, we sent it on, and it was really, there's a really good graphic that, you know, explodes or illustrates it all out.
And it's tuition only, or is there a hosting?
No, it just, it'll have everything right there, so it just, I would, you know, if we're gonna get, I think if Ms. Lysek can send that out, that'll clear everything up for everybody.
Great.
I have a couple. Yes, Bruce?
I just, it is a comment, I would hope that the House and Senate would not abdicate this opportunity to try to... abdicate this opportunity to try to bring this to resolution. I think that ballot question is going to be extraordinarily divisive and will serve nobody's best interest.
Huge turnout. Just, I just wanted to add others, uh, one other piece. The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission hosts monthly the mayors and managers in all of Merrimack Valley, and Roger Hatch from Department of Education, uh, Desi came. Uh, he is, um, accredited with developing the Chapter 70 formula, and he'll be retiring in August, but he put together this really comprehensive slideshow that, that Merrimack Valley is sending that I would like to share with you, that I think would be very helpful. Um, I can't print the print handout for you because you won't be able to read it. It's just, it's because they put too many slides on one page, and it's just useless. So as soon as I have that information electronically, I'll push it out to everybody because I thought it was really helpful in terms of the direction. They gave examples of Haverhill, how they figure out the Chapter 70, special education, some other pieces. So I think it would be, um, helpful to see sort of what they're talking about in terms of tweaking it since '07. We certainly haven't felt that, but I know other communities have.
Thank you for keeping us up to date on that.
I have just a few other announcements. Um, on Thursday, May 19th, 10:30 in the morning, our Real World Design Challenge students are going to be honored at the State House, and will have an opportunity to meet the governor. And I also wanted to let you know that the K-Ban League Athletic Directors and Superintendents are meeting as a group on later start times. And, um, Newburyport and Georgetown were really sort of out in the forefront and had done a lot more work than the others. So what they are proposing is that we continue to meet throughout 2017 with, uh, the idea of putting forward a plan for 2018 for the entire league. If the athletics can be resolved, that's a huge piece of this. So I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from Tara and Alex. I have asked them where they are in terms of their next step was going to be to survey students, so I have reached out to them to, and have not heard back as yet. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to update you on is that we had our last, um, uh, planning meeting for strategic planning, and, uh, it was a very productive, intense day, I would say. We had the seven action team leaders come back, and each of the teams, um, has some work still to do. Uh, we are in the process of meeting with all of the action team leaders to go over the feedback from the planning committee. They're asked to get together with their, their teams, uh, probably at least one more time, and then the planning team will be getting together again on, uh, June 8th. And so it's pushed the plans back a little bit further, but I also think it's going to make for a stronger overall plan. One of the things that Lisa and Angela and I have been, uh, as I said, meeting with action team leaders, but also, uh, meeting is that we really are beginning to see the synergy among the plans, and that's been really, really nice to see. We're going to end up with, with what I will predict is going to be a very strong plan, so. That's my last update.
Are we still going to, this, everyone pointed out that Salter was going to come and we were to talk about the busing costs. I know we have a year off, so we're just going to wait?
I, I, I would like to wait on that because I think it doesn't make sense to do it now if, if in fact it's going to be a, a year pushed out. I think we still have some other data that we can gather, and I, I still think we need to survey parents, too. That's my own opinion.
Can I just ask one question about that?
Of course.
Like, the science is there.
The science is there.
So if the people, if the, you know, if the parents say, "We don't believe it," or "We don't want to go to start times," like, are we talking about being okay with that, or?
Oh, I mean, I think that's up for the school committee to decide that.
Okay.
You know, I, I mean, I think that that's, that's one of the reasons why it will come back to the school committee for a vote.
The strategy of surveying the parents is more a, almost more a communication strategy than a policy strategy. Yeah, I haven't seen their surveys, I don't know what they're going to ask, I was just curious.
I mean, I, I think that, you know, we, we all have to think about the fact that, that, and I, you know, I, having said that, I also think that it would probably make sense to survey teachers, too, in terms of the impact. Because suddenly if you are going to school later and staying later, and you have childcare responsibilities, or you have, you know, depending upon where you are in your life, that's going to impact people, and that's, that's real. So, you know, if you, if you have an older student who currently is home before a younger student and is watching them and is now going to get home later, that could be, you know, those are all the factors that we, we have to look at, so.
May I just ask, is the June 8th meeting a full-day meeting again?
Yes.
Eight to six, like we did before?
To three. To three o'clock?
Eight to three.
Eight to three.
Do we know where?
Same place, Peta Hall.
Okay.
Just to clarify, by the way, it was on the January 6th at our meeting. We talked about the charter school costing us, at that point, we thought 1.6 to 1.8 million dollars per year, including a flat hosting fee and per pupil allocation. Just something we talked about, so if it's, I mean, I just did the math. 155 students by 1.9 million is a little over $12,000 a year, so I don't know if that's what we think for sending them, but...
I think it's less than that that we're paying to send.
I don't know the per pupil cost.
So if that's more than our tuition, then there is something else.
Can you have a look into that, Mayor, right? Thank you.
And I'll speak to Mrs. Lysek as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, that's it for me.
It's pick. Hey, in-house, we've entered testing season. So, um, we've had some MCAS testing happening at the, um, high school, and, um, the three schools that are going to be, uh, using Park this year are getting started. Um, over the month of May, they'll be testing at different times, but we've done some practice testing at the NOK and Mullen schools using all of the technology that we have available, and I'm very, very excited. Fingers crossed that went through it with absolutely no glitches whatsoever. We had, we had no problems.
Repeat that, please.
No glitches.
No, I mean, when you go into the real testing.
Yes, yes, oh, exactly. Yeah, no, so that's very exciting, and, um, kudos to our technology department that have worked very closely with our principals and our technology integrators to get that ready to go. And, um, you know, it's been a nice collaboration, too. We needed all of our Chromebook cards because we decided that we would use the same platform for all those students, so we went and picked up Chromebooks from the Breznerhan, and they've shared those for the month of May so that we could make the testing, um, uh, more convenient. So we've got all of the cards from the Breznerhan, too. So that's, that's going, uh, pretty well. And then we've got an awful lot going on right now, getting ready for summer. We're, we're planning summer program, we're, um, we're getting information about the type of professional development is needed. We've already got, uh, five summer professional development courses, um, scheduled, and, and people are signing up for those classes. We still have a couple more coming, and I'll report that out once those are all finalized so that you'll know what kind of offerings we're going to have for the summer. And, um, we also just, um, completed the first draft of the, um, uh, proposal for the NEF's new campaign, which is going to be around elementary STEM education. So that's just gone to the NEF for its first look, and, um, it's, it's an exciting proposal. I look forward to sharing that with you, um, soon, too. We're waiting for some feedback from them around the kind of additional information they might need, um, to use for their ASCS. But the first ASCS event that will support this campaign is at the end of May.
May 21st.
May 21st, so.
So what are some of the things you're looking for? I mean, if there's an ASCS campaign, they must have already identified what we need. Can you just...
Yeah, we have identified quite a few, uh, things that we need. We're, um, we're looking at creating a STEM space at the, uh, Breznerhan School.
Right.
And in that space, we'd like to have portable modules, uh, that will allow for a variety of educational opportunities.
Hmm.
So, um, you know, we've, we've put together a vision of what that might include. So, you know, we certainly wanted to include, um, inquiry-based science education. We wanted to include, um, some robotics, um, some maker spaces where students can be given a problem, and lots of things to explore that problem with and develop from. Uh, we saw the students' reaction to the 3D printing projects at the STEM Fair, so, um, we're looking at how we would incorporate that with our youngest students. Uh, we really, we want to start, uh, systems thinking at, within our youngest years in the schools so that we can just build and, uh, and grow from that. So, um, I will share that with you as soon as we get it a little more refined. It's, you know, it's in its first stage, so.
It's just exciting and, you know...
Right, and it will require, it'll require, uh, you know, ma- making sure that we're meeting safety requirements. We don't have that kind of equipment, um, in the space yet. We're going to need, you know, a lot of materials, um, a lot of tools, a lot of, uh, portable movable storage containers that can be moved in and out because we're looking at it servicing, uh, four grade, four grade levels with multiple experience during, throughout that. But we've decided to build it on a yearly overarching theme so that anything is, that's taught in that year would come back and relate to that overarching theme, you know. So for, uh, you know, one year would be discovery, another year would be, um, observation, another year might be problem solving, so.
That's exciting.
It is, it's very exciting.
That's why I like to have little details, just so we can entice people into
Yeah.
the great things that are happening in our district.
Very exciting.
That is exciting.
Very exciting, so, but as we think about the budget and we think about where we're going, you know, we do have to consider how we're going to keep some support for those kind of things because it's wonderful that the NEF is willing to take on this campaign to kind of create the environment, help us create that environment. But we've got to be able to, um, support the teachers in that because this is a new way of doing this.
And sustain it.
That's exciting. Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Join, Ed, will...
Can I just say one thing?
Mr. Hochheiser.
Thanks. If there's any way you could help message, because I've heard this from my own kids and from other parents, the efforts to keep stress level down around Park is backfiring. Because if we continue to tell kids that they need to get extra sleep and that there's going to be no homework on certain nights and those sorts of things, it creates this monster of, "Oh, my goodness, what is this test going to look like?" And we're talking about giving out bubble gum and all these other things.
Bubble gum?
I promise you, your teachers talk about kids bringing gum during the week of testing. Just throwing that out there, if you don't know that.
Not under those new furniture.
Yeah, okay.
That violates the normal candy, that violates the new candy rule, doesn't it?
I've never considered gum candy myself.
Just, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, thank you, we'll, we'll look into that.
And so the kids, like, to the point where, you know, my son's now worried about going to theater rehearsal because it's before a Park test, and what's that going to be? And he's like really nervy, he's been nervous for going on two weeks now. Um, and I've heard that from other parents as well, that, I mean, he only gets five minutes of homework a night. So if we make a big policy about not having homework the night before a Park test, I think we're really
Right.
overblowing...
We have a, we have a leadership meeting tomorrow. We'll address it with our principals and find out.
Stop talking about the tests. I mean, if the kids just show up and took it,
Yeah.
they would just show up and take it.
Then we'd do fine.
If we talk about it for a month in advance, they're going to think something major's coming.
Yeah.
Part of it has been, we've had to make sure that kids know how to utilize the technology.
I, I, I fully understand that. I fully understand that the practice.
Yeah.
But even that doesn't need to be part of... Hey, we got a new type of quiz here. We're going to do it on the computer today, see how you do. Right, because there has been other, um, comments and timeframes brought to me by parents saying like, "My kid is coming home doing a lot of, spending a lot of time talking about Park, practicing Park, learning how to write for Park, those sorts of things." I think, I don't know if teachers' anxiety levels is up about it, but I don't think everybody thinks of it as the trial year that we're trying to sell it as here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Subcommittee reports? I don't, um...
Because we got the minutes from Penn comm.
Right, I, I, I think we're all, we're all set with all of these. Um, I'm a little, um, concerned that one of our committees has not met yet, and it's, uh, May.
And, and I will tell you that I asked to not meet...
No, I understand that. I, I, I can understand that.
But that was a...
I, I think we all need to...
Part of the plan for meeting tonight was to set a time, we can do that, so, so before we leave tonight,
We can do that.
one, so just page, take out the calendars, we'll set a time.
Thank you.
6:30?
Policy, we didn't officially refer?
You got to bring the copy, though.
What?
You bring the copy, though.
Policy Subcommittee?
Sorry?
Um, we didn't officially vote to send this, or to review the field policy to policy? But do we need to do that, or are we all in agreement that that's...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
For the Policy Committee to review the policy regarding field use.
On Sundays. Uh, for use of athletic facilities on Sundays.
Right.
Sunday mornings.
So a revisit to the Battle of Fuller Field.
Oh, boy.
And hopefully it's not a battle anymore.
Ms. Sweeney, may I ask something? You've got your AP testing going on in the next three weeks, too. You talk about stress level of those kids.
I know. I know.
Yeah, but those are high school kids.
Could I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
In order to be able to attend to meetings, it's got to be early in the morning. She wasn't here to meet.
I'm fine.